Order. Should they rise for the flag, Slade? Flag allegiance to the flag in the United States of America. And to the refound like the vicious hands on a nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor Smalley. Counselor Grossman.
Here.
Counselor Hamilton.
Here.
Counselor Woods.
Here.
Counselor Daigle.
Present.
Counselor Whitaker. Mayor Sumner.
Here. Any media present? Hi, would you like to introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Karen.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thanks for being here.
Appreciate it.
We never give anybody. That's great.
Anyone wishing to speak for city council tonight on any subject matter will need to fill out a speaker form and turn it into the recorder. Forms are available on the sign in table in the back of the room. Please turn cell phones off or silence them during the meeting. Announcement for Zoom attendees. If you're joining tonight at meeting via Zoom, you will automatically be muted upon entry and you'll need to identify yourself if your full name is not already attached to the device being used. You will be unable to unmute yourself. If you wish to speak, use the raise your hand feature. Use it, click on the reactions icon at the bottom of your screen and click on the image of a hand. Reminder for council to speak into the microphone when talking so everyone can hear you. The purpose for public comment is a period to allow citizens to present information or raise issues regarding agenda items only. There will be a time limit at the end of the meeting for citizens to speak about off agenda items. A time limit of three minutes per citizen shall apply. All citizens must come up to their microphone. I have one for Jim Housman.
Good evening. Jim Housman, President of the Department of Sports, 1009, Department of Sports. Good evening, Madam Mayor, President. In a little bit, you're going to be getting a data update. So it seemed like an opportunity to support on a date. I've been stealing. Little history of nine years, nine year journey. Get here, right back in 2014, first time meeting with city manager. It's the idea, it's the council. That sounds like a good idea, but there's no money and body not, not here we are. It's been a, it's been a great journey, big partnership. It's a, it's a wonderful example of public private partnership. For you. Bring an essential community asset need, I mean, this will need. It's over to the class of water, well justification for, you know, property in the very beginning. And the recreational component, the mobility, the quality of life, the thing that attracts people to settle in as, as a place they want to relocate to, start a business. You all know how, how important, you know, recreation and parks are. And you have dedicated significant financial resources, the flow of staff time. Get us where we are, not only before upon all the other projects that you're doing, the Central Park, Wolf Red Rock. Part of the park. So you're expanding your park facilities, which is great. And that is going to be excellent investment as you go, as you go forward. Just going to continue to track them forward here. In fact, I meet all people in here all the time. Hey, I moved here, read about the park, came out when I did, and that's why I bought a house. I used to live in Rockford. I moved here. One of our volunteers is out there on a regular basis. I lived here, I moved here because of. But take pride in fact that it is, is an asset that people have identified. They'll not only move here, but people will regularly commute multiple times a week from Rockford. Or quality of recreation. It's going to become more and more. What have, what have we been doing? Well, you, you know, the efforts that the friends have done with the grant writing and getting, getting the money, the match money. And the partnership with the city to make this whole thing happen. And we do part of our mission and also his maintenance of facilities out there. So we have volunteers every day that are out there. They're mowing the hillside trails, picking up trash. They're doing the weeding in the parking lots, they're greeting the visitors, they're ambassadors for both the city and the friends about what the park is, what the city has to offer. But that's going on every day out there. And so just wanted to bring you up to date on how things are going. If you haven't been out there, even with construction going on, visitation is every morning, every evening, parking lots are full. The Church Road parking lot as well as the Church Road park. So public behavior themselves, fortunately, you haven't had that, that close to parts, but that's great. Um, as we move forward in this, this park coming online, I wanted to plant a little bit of a seed in your head as you, as you hear Christie's comment. Because with great capital investment comes great maintenance. And a couple of years ago, we embedded through the Parks Advisory Committee some financial avenues that the city could utilize to help develop maintenance fund. Anticipating the huge investment, not only for settling sports pond, but potential parking. So, so I'd love you to, or I would encourage you to start thinking about that. And some of the ideas that we presented and actually embedded with committee were for reserving facility. Want to reserve picnic shelter or want to hold an event at the park and reserve a large space for your event. A fee schedule for that. I'm not talking about people that just show up at the park and want to, you know, just want to use it, picnic or lunch and then continue to travel. I'm talking about someone that wants to reserve one component of it. That can go into your maintenance and that can help defer your cost and that can create a, a revenue stream for you. So be thinking about that, and I would really encourage you strongly to, to do that because the maintenance needs are huge out there. And there are, our staff, our volunteers, they need, they need some help. But the trash out there, the highway, all the traffic over there, it's a daily challenge out there. We've had some plumbing issues with sprinkler lines that have broken in the church road block. Freeze here and there, then, and so it's showing that's just a little bit of, either ramp up presence out there. And what I want you to be thinking about requesting. Here now. Correction, Larry, he's been advocating for that maintenance background. Not there yet, but I think sooner than later. Um, so that's our line, but I can answer any questions I have or stick around after that.
Jim, I just want to say, do you know? I get. Not really approached, but I get. From people a lot and it's always great call and how much they love it out there.
Well, that, okay, so you're, that's great, but you're hearing not contrary, but feedback. It, it is very popular. Nothing but positive. So good job moving forward on that. Let's keep it as, as the crown, I believe that was your term. Crown.
What's your biggest expense up there?
The biggest expense? Well, I think just having, having a staff eyes on the facility to be able to identify things in a timely manner so they can get. Hell, but then the biggest problem, Aaron, you can correct me, I think a lot of the irrigation in that church apartment is problematic. Very beginning, number of blowouts, we got vehicles drive over. Valve boxes and things like that. Is there anything else that, that comes to mind from answering this?
Do that and the trash.
Trash. Yeah, it was possible, so people bring their, they stop and they get food and they bring it and they just. But that's, but that maintenance is already increased, but playground and that whole area. Oh, I think big time. Well, I'm probably at 10 minutes.
Any other public comment? On to presentations, settling area chamber of copper.
Jim got 10 minutes, I was told they had three. Presentation. So I just wanted to come in and give an update. I was actually encouraged by council members to come in and do an update. Um, just on how the chamber is doing and what we're up to and especially the summer, what we've got going on. Um, we just got, uh, I'm going right into membership drive. It's our fiscal year, so it's when our membership re-ups. And so I have been hitting our membership upping pretty hard and I will be doing that for the next three months. While we have our influx of members re-upping and we also have a lot of new members coming in. Um, really exciting, we have a lot of wineries coming in. Really happy to have those partners and to have those members. We have a really popular membership. We have a lot of Roseburg and surrounding area, Elkton, Merrill Creek. Um, lots of people that want to, they're just contacting me to join the chamber that I haven't even reached out to yet. We have a really great position right now as a community and a destination. Um, on sports pond, uh, Travel Oregon called me about three weeks ago and asked me what our biggest asset, um, that we wanted to hang our hat on tourism wise. And it was easy to identify it's sports pond. So that is also at our state level as being one of our biggest attractions and biggest pull tour area. So, um, a couple of things on quickly on membership. Um, I don't know, I'm sure I mean, talk about it all the time, so. Pretty told you guys all of this, but a couple of big things in our membership. The photographers have been one of the biggest pull to our membership. Easily, and the printer, um, those two big benefits have been really hitting our, our membership and our community really well. They want, um, smart printing. You don't have to go to Roseburg to get it. We have a bigger printer in our new downtown office and that's also a big pull. They want to come do mixers here and they, they want to introduce their businesses to our community and our community wants to do that too. So that's been another really big driver for us. Um, so we're really happy with that. We did hire two local photographers to do a really great partnership. We have a strategic fund that we got $10,000 from Charles Southern Oregon and we were able to hire a social media expert. Let me appear, she does social media for Charles Southern Oregon. Southern Oregon eats and what to do in Southern Oregon and she is doing, she's also managing our chamber page. So with one host, um, I don't know if you guys have seen it, and the magic mushroom she did in May to increase our reach to 20,000 people. Um, which was really amazing. Uh, her reels are reaching huge and she's also sharing us on what to do in Southern Oregon. She'll be making reels from our top two members. So those businesses that join at our two top tiers will be eligible for those reels and our photographers, I was also able to hire with that money. Um, they will go and take pictures of our top two members. A lot of our businesses don't have the budget for really great photography. They can use that for staff pictures or product pictures, for reels, for advertising, anything like that. They get a whole package, those top two that we were able to offer through that grant. So really great drivers and lots of really great things going on. Um, we're also doing an ad we partnered with Oakland and we're going to have a whole page in the Charles Southern Oregon visitor guide. This is 70,000 copies. It goes out to every single visitor center in Oregon, um, on mostly all the hotels that deal with certified. Um, and lots of other stops that's going to be in the Portland airport, all those great places where we need to do some visitor drive. So we also just did this locally, so this is, this is the first ones to see. So this little beauty is, um, just it's going to sit at our tables in our restaurant, going to be in the counters of our, um, of our retail places and all of our businesses that people can scan it. It'll take them right to our website, to the events page where all of our members have their events going on. So it's just a really quick grab, drive right, right to the website and that's where all of our stuff is happening and they can get on there and kind of peruse. So I'll be dropping these off at all of our businesses, so anybody that wants one can grab one. I have a couple I brought with me and I also have some memberships that, that, that's pretty much it. Oh, no, sorry, just kidding. Um, we started doing, um, we have been doing chamber breakfast and so we've been really kind of switching this to a development. So I really wanted something to come out of these breakfasts. We did the speaker series where we brought down lots of different, we had a grant writer come down and speak to everyone and, and lots of different things. Um, but now we've switched it during the summer to more of a, um, action and implementation kind of meeting. So at their, at our last one, um, our group decided they wanted to make something. I asked them a question of how they were going to use, how we could use our resources right here, right now to really increase people going through our doors for our businesses. And they came up with a bingo style passport card. Um, and they identified our, our viewers as their demographic that they're going after. Um, so they're developing this right now within our meeting and online together. And these are our business owners, which is fantastic because it means that's really invested in, right? So when they go out and they start selling this to people to get those squares filled up with our small businesses for those people that are staying just a little bit longer because they're our viewers. We're really getting a, a great, you know, amount of buy-in with our community that way. We're really building our community and partners that way. When they go out there and they, we do this together, they're really building up our destination. So it's a really great thing. Would love your participation. Their second Wednesday of the month at 7:30 to 8:30 in the morning. We also have a ribbon cutting for Southern Drug this Friday. They're doing an open house style, we'll do the ribbon cutting around noon, but it's from noon to three and they're really excited. Um, I spoke to on Zoom Laura today. Uh, she's still in Salt Lake and I think she's coming on Thursday, but they're stoked about the community. They're super thrilled, so we're really excited to have them. We doing a couple more ribbon cuttings too, and I'll let you guys know Radio Days Museum and also Calhuiya, they're going to do another ribbon cutting, adding some antiques. And Radio Days just revamped and remodeled. Definitely looks amazing. So lots of stuff going on. Yeah, covered all of it, no question.
Okay, on to the consent agenda for June 12, 2023 minutes. We have a motion to second to approve consent agenda for June 12, 2023. Any concessions? Ready to go?
Counselor Smalley?
Yes.
Counselor Grossman? Counselor Hamilton?
Hi.
Counselor Woods?
Hi.
Counselor Daigle?
Hi.
Counselor Whitaker?
Hi.
Mayor Sumner?
Hi.
Motion carries.
On the council business, resolution number 2023.09, right away and go and purchase. I'm reporting.
That mayor, council. I, uh, this is the same tractor, there's no change. Now source wealth, I mean, wants us to have a resolution instead of the way we've done in the past. So you should have that resolution in your pocket and. Get a motion and just kind of this thing over.
Hey, so do I have a motion for resolution number 23.09, right away, go and purchase.
Who, who got it? I think, okay.
Any discussion?
Counselor Smalley?
Yes.
Counselor Grossman? Counselor Hamilton? Counselor Woods? Counselor Daigle?
Sure.
Counselor Whitaker? Mayor Sumner?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Madam Mayor, I just want to point out, this is a historic moment. Debbie was in the seat doing that job and then Diane, she's left. This is Melanie's very first resolution as our full-time official city recorder with the CMC qualifications.
Very. Good job.
Thank you.
Hey, on to Central Park stage name. So, uh, we have a list here of all, uh, different suggestions. So if anyone would like to start discussions.
I have a comment.
Yeah.
Well, you know, it occurs to me, no matter what the name is, people are going to abbreviate it short. It come in at the end, whatever, and not the whole thing. You probably need to keep that in mind.
So maybe look for a short name?
That'd be my suggestion.
You have a suggestion?
Well, my suggestion was the Pavilion Central.
The what one?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, he was actually looking it up, I did. I didn't think it was the Pavilion either, but I checked the picture really. At any rate, it sounded classy to me. That's true. Right.
What do other people thought? Isn't it just silver slink?
I was wanting to go and comment on that.
I had to.
Well, we take that one off.
I had to throw it in for you, Joe.
Oh, you, you set me up.
Well, I like, I don't know if the lady that was here last time is here. I don't think. I really like the Grand Central, uh, band show or the Grand Central stage.
The Grand Central stage was what her suggestion was, yeah.
Yeah. I get so many people that call it doing music off central, they all want to call it the half show. They don't want to take anything, half show, I'm sorry. Uh, we don't want to take anything from Roseburg or coffee them or whatever. So, uh, I, I think we need to just stay away from. The half show, especially, I don't see, here, but that's what people want to seem to call it. But Central Park. Stage or the Central Park Band Show, I think is good because we've got the train right there. So you think Grand Central Station would see trains.
Good point. They put the train and this stage covered, Grand Central.
And then Central Avenue, Central Park.
And Grand, and Grand Central stages, sure.
Kind of sounds too, really close to the half show.
Well, I would, that, well, I said band show because some people wouldn't say half show, so that was.
And that, and I, I feel that kind of only covers when it's up and not down.
Yeah.
Let's try to think of, uh, something that covers when it's both up and down. That's why, yeah.
I think going back to what Gary was saying is having a name for it, where it's a point of destination. People will, when you're marketing it, letting people know what it is, where they can just say, you know, they're, they're going to the club, like that almost like a, a specific name. Uh, some place kind of iconic. Like the central state, central stage, but it's, it doesn't have to necessarily be stage either. Um, but just something like the groove, just, you know, the group, like we're going to the group. So it's easy marketable. People know that once it becomes known what the group is, people know that it's a, it's a place to have music events or different type of theatrical events or whatever. It's just easy, it's easily marketable, um, recognizable. The spotlight, the spotlight, you know?
A newspaper, isn't it?
I don't know. I looked it up as a the source, there's a different name for all these other things.
This would have been a good opportunity to be very involved and have a fun, have a name.
We did have, we, music off central put it out to everybody, their, their choices and that was sent all around to the, I think I gave you guys. That was last year.
Remember that.
I went to all the staff. These were all submitted, but.
I didn't hear from everybody, but these are from just counselors.
Did you bring in any of those names that it's?
Um, I think what I've been calling this, because we didn't come up with it, is Central Park stage.
Debbie, get you.
There's a couple others just to throw in there. Rhythm Retreat Stadium. Serenity Sound Stadium. Sunset Serenade.
Mayor, how would you like to narrow down the selection? You guys want to start with what you don't like?
I think that, yeah, let's take out a couple that we don't like and I, I agree that it might be better to have just like maybe a one or two. Um, so people can either reduce it to one name or have it for people to be able to say. So if we can come up with like, agree on three to move forward with and then we can vote on those. I think, uh.
Are you guys all in agreement on Silver Slinky?
It's gone. Yeah.
Sorry, Joe.
I would recommend we take off ones that identify as like the show is up.
So the ones that say band show?
It says band show.
Like half dome, band show or, um.
Where shots are here, isn't it?
So do you like the Pavilion on Central?
Isn't Pavilion peppers?
Yes.
So I think that'd be.
Your answer, Central Park stage?
So we have the Grand Central Stage and Grand Central Park Stage, which are both kind of the same.
Right, one's just shorter.
Half dome would be all, Central Park Spotlight, it's much like a newspaper. Groove on Central. Ron Debo on Central. All around. Ron Debo on Central. No, so I think that's all. Grand Marquee. Royal Grand.
So it looks like we have three, so Grand Central Stage, Grand Central Park Stage and the groove. Yeah.
Okay.
Do you want to just do a hand raise for each one?
Yeah.
Okay. Raise your hand in favor of Grand Central Stage. Raise your hand in favor of Grand Central Park Stage.
I'll take the other.
And the groove on Central.
What's the groove though? I'm just curious, what's the groove?
It just sounds like it's, it's. Well, no, it just.
Reminds me the seventies, I grew up in seventies.
It, it, it becomes more, it becomes the destination. Um, when you have like a creative name to something, it brings interest to what's going on here.
Yeah, but what is the groove? That's what I'm trying to figure out. It's rhythm.
It's, it's rhythm, it's music.
Oh, okay, okay, all right, all right. You're talking about the groove related to my era.
But it's still, it's, it's a one liner, quick, brings interest in the desire. It doesn't, it doesn't sound old. I think some of these other names sound old and if we want to.
Well, I, groove and that's going back 50, 60 years, so that is old. I just thought when you were using the word groove, there's a new term for it. Whatever, I mean, other.
With, with, if we're wanting to attract, you know, youth and.
Seniors.
And, and even seniors, which you're kind of hitting all of the, um, the points, but it's deeply marketable.
So Grand Central Stage had four votes.
I think of it as an activity.
And Grand Central Park Stage had one vote, the groove had two votes. So Mayor, you can go ahead on with, um, a motion.
Do I have a motion for a, the Central Park State? I have a motion for a, the Central Park Stadium.
I'll make a motion to name. Stage, Grand Central Stage.
I have a second. I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Counselor Smalley. Counselor Grossman. Counselor Hamilton. Counselor Woods. Counselor Daigle.
Well, yes, okay.
Counselor Whitaker. I'm sorry, what was that? Thank you. Mayor Sumner.
But it's not like it.
Motion carries.
What do you guys have?
Yeah, I was wondering if you had anything about your train into Central. Brought in the train, and then for Donna, I mean, it's a big park. There's a lot going on, the water park, the tennis courts, all the other activities they have in there. It seems like a lot of events happen there.
Right.
Grand Central Events.
We're just talking about the stage.
Your arms around the whole thing. Go to Pacific Stage.
There's nothing tangible. It's an action.
Yeah, and that's.
It doesn't describe. Something tangible.
All right, on to recreational vehicles as temporary living.
Staff report. Mayor, council members, this staff report is a follow-up to our public outreach. That in response to the city council's request and discussion during December twelfth, twenty twenty-two. As you seen your staff report, the city staff helped with the planning commission, two different discussions, along with a workshop. We brought back to them at their June twentieth meeting, another workshop. And that's after doing the public outreach survey, everyone was in the nine seven four, nine seven four seven nine zip code. Along with the open house. Well, we're, I guess, we did have participation in our planning commission as well. In your packet, all the summary from each of those surveys, the open house. And so what we are asking is the planning commission that they're doing the twentieth meeting. Has provided the recommendation to city council to devise an ordinance to the municipal code prohibiting residing within an RV. By the city limits on private property. So what we ask you tonight is, are approved the planning commission recommendations for adopted ordinance? Amending the municipal code prohibiting occupancy RV on private property? Or not approve the planning commission recommendation for adopted ordinance amending the municipal code prohibiting occupancy of an RV in city limits.
So we have an ordinance in place right now.
Right now, right, right now, it's in strictly in our Southern Development Code, for when our land. Where we're working with Chad Jacobs and Chad, we've tried it. He said to make it more black and white for the code enforcement process. Putting an ordinance, putting it inside in the municipal code would make it better, more effective for home point.
I think before we go further on this, if we get the motion, that we need a little better explanation on these options, because. I talked to Chris D a little bit, and I think it just didn't have a good enough explanation in staff report about the difference between the Southern Development Code. Of taking no action because it's already in there, and then the municipal code, which already says it's under the municipal code. And, and what the difference is, and how, how if. Without reading this, I'm not saying it correctly, but taking no action, continue to not permit RV occupancy as identified in the Southern Development Code. And then recommend to move forward with the proposed ordinance to amend the Southern municipal code to prohibit occupancy of an RV. And then, or enforce the existing rules and regulations outlined within the Southern municipal code and Southern Development.
So what these five options, I think Smalley's gonna try to bring them up, are exactly what we presented to you guys in April. That's why the two pages in front of that last page is kind of the description of those. So going through an explanation for both of them, the take no action. So the take no action is not putting anything, no verbiage inside the municipal code. Because currently there is no verbiage in the municipal code regarding living in an RV, prohibiting living in an RV. Right now, it's strictly in Southern Development Code, which plan use. We have the definition for an RV, which states size, that is a temporary structure. In our residential living, our slight standards for dwelling, you then have minimum requirement. And certain requirements that have to be met, and RV does not meet those. So that's where it becomes right now prohibited. So the ordinance would then put something in the municipal code. Because right now there is no verbiage in the municipal code regarding being in RV. So that's where Chad recommended putting, creating an ordinance, putting in municipal. Number three would just be enforcing the existing rules. Kind of, I guess redundant. Which would be, right now, our code enforcement process is complaint driven. People have to file complaints. For it to be acted on. Number four, moving forward with allowing it. That is, if, you know, planning commission had the option, say, we won't allow it for like a two week application process. We've been forward with coming up with those rules and guidelines, kind of like the original packet heading Springfield had a good set of rules and guidelines. That was one of their options. Number five, putting in a sign place and manner, so that would be going through that legislative amendment process. Which is similar to when we have to do development code updates, about six months or so process. To then legalize it. Putting it in as an RV is livable, habitable.
Here it says, approve the planning commission recommendation for adoption. So you guys go right to order up, and then you can use that.
Yeah, and we would work with Chad on the verbiage and all the language, what that one is.
Okay, I just wanted to brief at the beginning, so now we'll need a, a motion before we discuss.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the planning commission recommendation to stop an ordinance or, orness. Amending the municipal code to prohibit occupancy of RV on private property. And our survey, there were four hundred and fifty-seven that said no, and a hundred and twenty-four that said yes.
Who's, who's second?
All right, we have a motion in a second. Now we have the session. Discuss your.
Well, I have something, it's research. And I looked into what the state, I've seen in Springfield, they came up with free off. But one of the conclusions was one that I kind of agreed with, but was like, well, we're in a time when hoping is short supply, and it's hard to get into. So, and, and I attended that meeting that we had, and, and a lot of people, I know what they're concerned about, I understand that, I agree with that. They didn't want to have trashy trailers and garbage. Like our homeless. And I understand that, but there was also about here, daughters go to college and. They need a place to stay for the summer, so they couldn't, they wanted to rent an apartment, they couldn't rent one that they could find. So. What they, they actually have a name for these people. They're called working homeless or the retired homeless. And these are people that aren't of age, even normal people, just need a place to live. And if we tell them, we can't live here, they can't live anywhere in the county, they can't live anywhere. Basically unless they're in a certified RV court. And that's still legal, and no matter what we do, you could still have those trailers on property. All we're really affecting is whether somebody could live in. So, I don't know, I thought about this a lot, and I'm gonna have to stay in the voting, because I personally have all this. But I think it'd be reasonable, we should have allowed. This to happen maybe, but. Which I'm controlled by, so we don't put the truck. And, you know, and. I, I went over to Eugene, and you look at the mess there, I understand, I, I hate that. I don't want that at all, but I think, I think there are decent people that move a place to live. So, well, they're not all children. So there's a dilemma, and. It's gonna be, it's gonna be difficult to be the way I can, you know, with these people that are decent people that are gonna have to leave their homes. And, you know, that's all it has to say.
Well, and I get the ultimate end of this was to, so we were asked to kind of put that public reach out there. Ask everyone in the community that we could get their input from. And we did get quite a large selection of people. They all have pros and cons to hear them, to review their responses, make additional comments if there's any out there. Just to make sure that you guys are what the people are asking for, what they want to see. It sounds like there's provisions or options that may be able to be incorporated in current ordinances that are being worked on right now for parking RVs in the street. Or within chapters eight and ten, Chad might be able to elaborate a little bit, but maybe it comes down to that definition of habitation in RV. So just looking at, at it as a whole, and what the purpose we want, the staff report is more to provide you with that summary and direction. The planning commission took additional comments after all of the public outreach. And after following that additional, those additional people commented, is what they derived of the decision that they made, the recommendation.
It certainly is a big question. If, if we as a city decide that you're not going to submit people to own their property. RVs on their property, if you have family members living with them or, or whatever, and. Lit is now going to prevent those same people from taking their RV and moving it to a park. Our Central Park and parking it there and living there and moving it into Bay. Now that we have a whole set of problems in addition to, or taking them, taking them over to our, our. Hastings Village, where now there's trailers over there, these people who are working, people. Maybe have children, and now they're being exposed to some of the things that are going over, going on over there. That, that would be a bigger concern for me, where we started executing these types of guidelines on our. Homeowners, where they can't, I, I mean, I can see having regulations surrounding, having some RV on your home, setting some guidelines. To put forward to say, no, they can't do that. I don't know that that's going to not create a bigger problem for us.
And I gotta, originally, it was no. And this only in these last six months that we were lenient and letting people do it because of this. And to go back to Gary and your point, the options of doing something like the time based scan or guidelines like Springfield. We had those lengthy discussions. Those were, but I think there's so many variables. I mean, your building permits, you're in the city water, you're in the city sewer, you're not paying for the development charges. And you're then now taking up parking spaces, and then you get all the overflow on the city, really. There are so many, I mean, then you have electrical permits, and it's like, okay, where's your end and what's going to do all this work?
I understand that the lit went happening, and you say, no, you can't do that at all, will still place to live. Looking through the nights or the quarters, providing places to live, and these now, all these people are going to become our homeless.
And I don't think tonight, as we're expecting the, yes, that's it, slam dunk.
Yeah.
Like, you know, slam dunk, I think it's ongoing work that's gonna have to take place as far as how do we proceed? What are, you know, because we're not, to me, as a close knit community that we are, we're not just gonna say, okay, move out, you're done, here's a fine. I think we need to work with everyone that's there, and, you know, how we approach it. We gotta get the verbiage figured out for the ordinance or what we're implementing first, if that's what it's divided on. And then we'll work towards that solution with additional discussions and.
I have a question for Chad. Chad, if we vote. Against modifying or amending the municipal code. Does that mean that we have to change the development code to allow it? Because it sounds like it's in contradiction with each other.
Yeah, so right now, there's nothing explicit in the municipal code that prohibits living in recreational vehicles. What we do have is the development code that sets forth various, in various zones, what uses are allowed. And living in recreational vehicles is not allowed in any zone in the development code. So that's how it's prohibited. It's prohibited by basically saying, since we don't permit it, it's prohibited. And so what we need to do is, if you want to allow it, we would need to amend the development code. To make clear where these are available to be used for residential purposes. And then you may want to have an amendment to the, to the municipal code, I'm sorry, for the municipal code. That sets forth standards about, you know, all the things that you were just talking about, you know, electric use or other sorts of things, and, and, you know, how that's gonna work. So, you know, sort of a, a two-front approach is what you probably want to do if you want to allow this. Because there's a lot of those bigger issues that you'd have to decide on the scope of use that you're going to allow.
And if we were to amend the municipal code for the motion. Then we just have to amend the municipal code itself, the development, the target way.
Correct. And, and just to be clear, what you're doing tonight, you're voting on giving direction to staff about how to proceed. So you won't actually amend any of the codes tonight. We'll have to come back to you with actual code language. This is really just providing direction to staff about what to bring back to you, if anything.
I wanted to make some comments about this, because right now, I think that we're kind of changing direction a little bit. Our, our citizens have, have pretty much stated that they want us to move forward for amending the Southern municipal code. And I think some of the main reasons are many of our, our residential areas, which are, are single family. Dwellings and small lots. Many of those people don't want to end up with a big RV parked right up against their bedroom window. And so, and that's not what it's meant for, those residential lots. Now I can see it being a little different if you have a one or two acre lot in the city limits. And you have room that's not really affecting anybody. So I can see it different in different areas of the city. But many of our citizens who responded is what they're, they're wanting. And so I would recommend that we move forward with this, but we also look at potentially having it as a. Something that is complaint driven. So that if it happens to be in an area that's not affecting people directly, and no one's complaining about it, then we're not moving out there.
Yeah, I have another question for Aaron. And that is, last month, you said that the RV vehicles are not connected to water and sewer. And that that would be a problem. If they didn't take it and drain it somewhere. And that that would be a problem if they didn't take it and drain it somewhere.
I don't, I, um, that's not my recollection of what I said. I, I. If they're living in them, a lot of times they are hooked up. If they're not hooked up, there was a gal that was saying that. They have to haul them somewhere and, and dump them. That could be the case if they don't have a, a clean out. It's very easy right outside the home to have an RV dump or a clean out put in and they would do that. It does affect our system. It does cost us. There is a cost associated with having potentially kind of theoretically an extra dwelling on that lot. And so our thought was maybe if. Before the whole citizen thing where they all said that we don't want it. Our thought was that if we were gonna allow it, there needs to be some sort of fee schedule so that we can.
That was, I wanted clarification on that.
Yeah. So a water hookup is easy, uh, for most homes. Wastewater is a little more difficult, but you see a lot of them, they're out there. Even if people don't have RV, they generally have a clean out. That's any new construction requires that right outside the home. So there's usually a place for them to dump. Um, so they can be up there for both relatively easily without us really knowing. And I don't know if that answered your question, Joe.
I think it's true that, like, for example, you wanted to edit that your house and you have the same issue. I mean, which sewer is like, they have to put a set of papers down, so many bedrooms.
That's, that's if you're on a private system.
It wouldn't if you had a bedroom, but we look at.
So if I had an extra bedroom, that more people live in the house when they get here.
I, I don't believe so.
You wouldn't know.
Well, we would if he, if he went above board.
If you're living in the trailer and using super, it's no different than living in the house and using. And as far as the water goes, I mean, we're paying for the water regardless. It's not like that's an extra cost. But in as far as the rest of the code, it's like, but there's a whole, I really nice village up here. It's part and they all live in RVs and everything. It's just fine.
Right. So they, they went through an RV approval process. So there's built a code where you have your electrical stand built a code. So if you go to, I, I wanna come look into your house. You don't have an outlet outside the house. I guarantee that would fight for it.
The point is, RVs are equipped, the handle of the bolt that comes into it. And perhaps Eugene on that put a smaller cord on. But realistically, RVs are built better than houses.
But realistically, your house is not built to accommodate the bulk of just what.
When a fire starts, a neighbor on fire.
Well, that doesn't happen.
Still an official disagree.
Yeah, I guess several.
I had, I've had several emails and phone calls and pictures. And one of them, the trailer was an older little trailer that was between the two houses. And the picture that he sent to me was actually on fire and he not, had he not taken that picture and called the fire department, they probably both would have. Yeah, so there's.
This is gonna burn up.
I suggest that we. Approve the planning commission's recommendation for the office, let them write up what they wanna write up. Thoughts, and bring it back to us and then we can look at.
Um, one second. Is there anyone from the audience who would like to give some input? Let's start at the back.
Yeah.
Would you come up here, please? Thank you for adding.
Be up here?
Yes.
Seventeen days. Back seven, early night area. What I don't is what if somebody buys one, puts a trailer, RV trailer. It's not next to the house. They're actually living. And I just, I really, what drew us here was the area was full thing. And we live up there. Look down on the one and I just like, now they're, they're in hillside. Whatever, or phase. They're building in phase one, nine, two, three. And they're gonna, they've got four phases up there. You're talking about, I don't know. I don't know. I, I just think that if we, if we bring, if we let these people. Live in their RVs on the property. By itself, we're actually ignoring against what the community. It was overwhelming and we don't wanna see that. They can't abide by our rules. That's what brings people here. That's what brought us here. And we talked to a lot of people in the area that come from California. Other states either they moved here and it's a watch town. Like where I live here, it's apparently nice. Now if they start putting lots in across the street, I believe. I'm an international. Yeah, the new section above us does not have the same. We've not even parked RV on our property. So anyways, I'm just saying a lot of people came here because of what you have. It's a nice place. It's not a Portland or a Russian one. Russian, thirteen, fifteen thousand people. The kids live down to Portland where you have to walk around the people that are taking the leap on the road. You know, it's just, it's not a place you wanna be. Don't wanna see that in a nice town. And bring it, strictly where they put an RV on.
The, uh. The thing, you said overwhelming for both of them. Thirty-five or four percent of the people that were involved in the process of voting. Four by hundred people. Additionally, if we allow it. My fear is that you would get out against other communities, other cities. And we become the RV city in Oregon.
That was the best comment all night. You just said we will become the RV capital of the world. I left the RV capital of the world. I wanted to come here. It was a beautiful little city. We moved here two and, oh, Brent Hunsaker, nineteen seventy-two, which you moved here two and a half years ago. And we moved from Los Angeles. Los Angeles tried this out in our little area, Solentahunga. Where their big heart came along. They said, we wanna help our neighbors, our friends who have people staying temporarily. Let, let's try to help outlets. Let's allow people to convert their garages for extra living. All the garages didn't have cars in them anymore and the streets had more cars. Well, if you can convert a garage, you might as well put an RV in the front yard too. It started to go to hell quickly. Yes, there were big, there were lots of people who were really nice people who just needed a helping hand and they've got big hearts and they're. Clean, pretty RVs, but that was a small fraction of them, ladies and gentlemen, a very small fraction. It got out of hand quick. We could see the handwriting on the wall. We left, we took our money and left. You don't want these nice people who just moved here to take their money and leave. Because you'll be left with nothing but the trailers who are not paying taxes and you'll have nothing but problems. Trust me, you have a small problem now. You have a complaint driven problem, but the complaints, I've heard several people say, I've written complaints. It's gone on for months. It's gone on to a year now, third, fourth, fifth complaint. And all you did was come out and tell the person I want you to get rid of that, oh, that's the woman that complained about you. You didn't do her the job. You, she paid taxes and wanted you to take care of this problem anonymously. And it wasn't done anonymously. Now she's got an irate trailer person living behind her. Not gonna work. This is a small problem now. If you big hearted folks get too big hearted, it's not gonna be a small problem. It's gonna be a big problem and then it'll be an expensive problem. If I find out that I've got a trailer park growing across the street from my house and my property value goes down. Guess what? You'll have another problem on your head. You'll have me coming here talking to you and with a different tone of voice. Um, complaint, gray water, sewage. You cannot dump even gray water in the state of Oregon. You will have more gray water, which I don't know if you've ever smelled gray water. It's like a male billy goat. You don't want it running down the street. It is horrible. And even if they're taking care of their sewage into the, into the sewer system, which some of the chemicals that they have in black water tanks. Is not gonna work well with your pumping station down here. It's gonna be a little bit of a problem. To kill some of the happy bugs that take exterior sewer. There are, there are sewage treatment friendly, are, are the black water treatment chemicals, but they're a little more expensive. And I don't think people are gonna seek out the more expensive treatments if they use it all. Electricity, most homes are a fifteen amp. All RVs are thirty to fifty. You plug that thirty amp in and you turn on an air conditioner and you add a little skinny extension cord. You have a fire, my friends. I know. I am an RV owner and I darn near set a friend of mine's house on fire. Cause I just needed another twenty feet. All I had was a little skinny cord. Pop, pop, smoke fizz. It wasn't pretty. Had you not been home, she might've lost her house. Electricity is bigger. Votes. I remember a lot of those votes that came through. The people that wanted to have it, they didn't even live in settling. So go back and look at your tabulation. Some of those folks who said, oh yeah, let's have it. We're outside of the community. We don't count those votes. They don't pay taxes here. That's probably about it. I have a state through its heart and stop it. I love this little community. You've got great things going on. You've got some great investments and, and housing that's coming along. Your revenue is gonna increase. If we get named as a nasty city that doesn't wanna help both poor people and the trailers. Well, God, what a problem I'll suffer through. Not a problem at all. And it's not to say I don't have a big heart. I don't wanna help people. I do. But I don't wanna see my property value or my safety or this city suffer any more from. These are small problems now. If you, if you get too generous, you're gonna have a problem like you cannot imagine. We just left them. I don't wanna leave here because bring that problem to your front yard. Please. Option three.
Thank you.
Go to your ass.
Thank you.
Name of your name?
Uh, Joe, I wanna clarify something just quickly. I brought to my attention that maybe I sounded like that it was okay to dump your sewer. And a clean out next to your house. I, all I was speaking to was the possibility. It's very possible and it's easy to do. Not that it's okay. It's against the municipal code. So I wanna be very clear about that. If I came across. And somehow that was, I thought that was okay. That's not what I was trying to infer.
Just the response. Brought up something, uh, that I had not even thought of. That one, that RVs pay a, uh, motor vehicle. B, they don't pay taxes. So we would not benefit from the RV because they're all motor vehicle. You have something around the outside of them.
I have a question for Troy. Troy, if somebody puts in a complaint for some issue, you, I don't think you ever tell people who puts in a complaint, do you? If they ask you, will you tell them?
They call anonymous. That was the experience.
I, you'll read on this, oh, thirty-one, he's forced it up. Been there about five years. And I know some cities have a provision for, uh, visitation, somebody like family or friends or in the area. No matter where a park, your RV to your, your house, either on the street or you have room on your property park for. If the, you know, four or five days, is, is there a provision for that? I know some cities have like a seventy-two hour, uh, parking and then you have to.
One of our options is, well, there's many on there, but one of them is fourteen days.
I think that's, that could be something when we're rewriting the municipal code, that that could be something to be added in.
Okay.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second on the table for adopting number two. Are we ready to vote?
Counselor Smalley?
Aye.
Counselor Grassman?
Aye.
Counselor Hamilton?
Aye.
Counselor Woods?
Aye.
Counselor Daigle?
I understand.
Counselor Whitaker?
Aye.
Mayor Sumner?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I have the city manager report.
Uh, it went towards pond update, right?
Horse pond update.
I just want you, now this is Brian Swanson right here. He won't be missed.
Sure.
She's already taken one of your desks, your chair.
That's it. How many more days?
You don't know what.
You know, you're counting.
Mayor Sumner, City Council, Brian Lee. Here's that one. It's gypsy. Horse pond, Canadian Park, construction update. As you guys are aware, J R P Construction is a contractor. They are doing an amazing job. Their headed schedule, the additional overflow parking, the grade is set. They don't plan on paving that though later just because of all the construction equipment, stuff like that. All the infrastructure's in, they're ready for the inclusive play equipment. The set, um, the confused now whether they're performing for stages, but. Two of the pavilions are, they are, uh, are up and they look amazing. I'm not sure if you guys have been out there, but they really look amazing. The restroom, all the structures in, they'll be pouring pad this week for the restroom. The other two pavilions that are up right now, those pads will also be poured this week. Uh, they anticipate raw tech. It's a shape, inflation of restroom. Weeks, though that's aggressive, but. So I don't know if you guys remember, but several months ago, Houston staff made a decision to move forward and purchase a lot of the, for this project. Uh, delays in seeing the material equipment. I'm just gonna go through it real quick. So the boardwalk material has all been seen. It's onsite, inclusive play equipment. We received everything. It's at the wastewater facility inside their bay. Um, except for the fishing pier. There's two slides, a four foot, a six foot. Um, and then two musical instruments, but they're supposed to be here the last week of July. Um, the concrete tennis table, it's six weeks out, which that's anticipated. So we can get it in there. Comes as been ordered. Um, the picnic tables, trash receptacles, we've seen. They're also stored at the wastewater facility. The benches are ordered, but friends know mostly. They're about six months out, which is fine here December. Um, K O sign, it's two weeks out. It's pretty much complete. The fencing material is all been delivered on site. And then the last. And then the last one that I'm sure everybody wants to hear is nationwide forty-two. So ESL has signed off on it. EQ has signed off on it. The US Fish and Wildlife has signed off on it. It is in the final review at the core. But once they do their final review, then it will go to wet litigation. But once that's done, should get that approved. I'm going to be hopeful that in four to six weeks, we should have that. If we do get it within four to six weeks, we'll still be on schedule and be able to report it. Project done. Some really good things are going on out there. It's definitely, like Jim said, the friends and one heck of a team effort and very long ongoing effort. But it's going to be amazing.
We became riots.
I think my wife's going to overrule that. That was the friends of sports. Do you want to elaborate on the musical instruments?
What's the question?
I was, that was a.
What is your question? What is, what is? Their chimes? And, and microthylophone?
No.
No, it's called anatase. It'd be unique, a lot of the components are unique.
Thanks, Brian.
All right, now, city manager update. Other council comments. Remember monthly meeting time is limited. Please ask questions or make statements that are likely to benefit the group. Individual comments or questions that can be handled on a one-on-one basis should be handled outside the meeting. Counselor Smalley?
Uh, just congrats to Brian on his retirement and I enjoyed the short kind of work together.
Counselor Grassman?
Oh, I've got a lot to say about Brian. I guess. Congratulations on your retirement and hopefully we'll see you around, you know, every Monday, stuck-up Monday.
Uh, Lord President?
I want to thank the Lions for the flags. Our city just looks wonderful when they're up. I wish good luck to Brian. We worked a lot of years together. You are awesome. Diane's not here anymore. I've worked with a lot of years with her. Please. Now, we'll do a great job, so. Now. Anybody that would like, if you all know, I do Music Ops Central. So I have some flyers that have been going to be wanted to take on with. It starts just Thursday's the first one and it's petty fever. It's a Tom Petty. Do I make you cry? Sorry. It's a Tom Petty tribute. They're fabulous. Um, so that kicks off the season this Thursday. So love to see y'all out there. Um, I think it's going to be a great time. I'm excited for it. Uh, I still need three people, three strong men that would like to help Diamond Rio unload all their unload their equipment and reload it. So there can't be any alcohol in during that time. But if, if you know of anybody that might be interested, let me know. Well, Diamond Rio flies. So I don't know if they've got, they just said, it was in their contract. They needed eight strong sober men. So I have, I have five. I need three more.
They need eight people to carry their stuff in?
Yes. So if you didn't know Diamond Rio is going to be there, don't be one of the ones that, who's that? Anyway, I want to thank everybody in the city for their support. I know Aaron will probably be sick of me after
Already is.
The five weeks, but it can't be worse than the other event that's going on, right? We've done that after the next weekend. Anyway.
You've done a great job though. Single-handedly took this over, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, there was a team of three of them. And she, the other two just kind of faded away and she has stepped up and did almost all of this. So, pretty cool.
I'm excited about it. I hope everything was cool. That's it. Oh, wait, I have one. Sorry. If you are so inclined, me and Jessica, who is the, the chamber, she's kind of been helping me the last couple of weeks. We are going to be on the radio tomorrow at twelve-thirty. Talking about Music Ops Central.
Everybody listen.
What station?
Um. Yeah. Brian.
Okay, absolutely. I think I can just echo what both Counselors Smalley and Hamilton said about congratulating Brian on his retirement, how much fun and enjoy that time. And then also, and the flag that we had out with July holiday, really touching. My son was home at that time, but it was a little special, so it was nice. Um, I did have a couple of questions for Eric on Catholic Park. Catholic Park, Catholic Park. Is, is there something going on that's kind of blocked off right now?
We've closed just one of the entrances because the kids are kind of racing through there. That's, that's slow that down.
Got some positive feedback about that, too.
Um, we put up some temporary barricades, but we'll uh, we're going to close that off with a more permanent heavier method. No, no, that's just.
And then the other thing was, um, the road leading up to the dog park, is that anywhere off the maintenance? We tried to drive up there, they go and
That's a crazy.
It's a wonderful road.
I had the engineer up there on Friday. Uh, we're meeting with Nice River to kind of try to design how we're going to pave that and so it's in the works. So we have got a lot of feedback about it. A council priority, I believe, to, to get that fixed up, so yeah.
Yes, we have people come off the freeway just to go to our dog park.
And their four-wheel drive. Well, I, I want to say about the Music Ops Central. This is really good. This is probably
Yeah.
The best thing we've done for a while.
Free, Gary.
I want to
Yeah, and it's free. Whoever said that.
But the other thing I want to say is it's just kind of like I told you, so kind of things. My apologies to Jim already. But a long time ago, I said, I really prefer Orange Pond being more rustic because every time you improve something, pretty soon you're going to have to charge for it. And here we are. I know, I don't, I don't think we should charge for that. It's going to have to come up with money, no doubt, but.
Talking about the pavilion, they want to reserve it for their events.
Well, yeah, that's okay.
We do the same thing over here.
Well, that part's okay, right? Just keep in mind starting people. And Jim said, that you said not, it wouldn't be for people using it, correct?
Yeah.
Correct.
I just wanted to throw that out as kind of like a reminder. And then I'll quit going through that.
Counselor Whitaker?
Well, just, just to say about Sports Pond. What Jim was really talking about was the the hires maintenance-wise that can be available to take care of things that are going on. Because right now, if our, if our volunteers died or whatever happened to them, you have nobody to do it with. And that's, that's Yeah, well, Eric could do it.
Well, first I want to thank the fire department. They have an awesome spaghetti fundraiser for their volunteers. It was great. I hope they did well. Uh, the cookies were especially outstanding. I didn't win any of the raffle though. I was a little disappointed, but that's okay. But as the people want. Um, I also wanted to ask, uh, what was going on along the side of the fire department? The fence got moved over and the flag monuments got kind of moved over. I'm curious about that.
Oh, that is to facilitate parking and safe passage for pedestrians on the walk path. And another road for the traffic, for traffic. Kind of have both things right there, so. Because we use that behind that big field, our main parking area for a lot of, a lot of things, so.
So is it going to be paved or like gravelled or?
Eventually. It's going to be gravelled. For this summer. But pavement is a plan.
Do you have any plans what to do with the two uh, flag monuments other than them just like teetering on the edge of the left side right now?
Um. Yeah, we haven't decided a permanent, a permanent place.
Well, one is right on the edge. I think it's so, it's so easily someone could push it right.
Our citizens wouldn't.
And the other one, right up by the
By the bridge.
Bridge, it looks like it's almost broken in half. They cracked all the way up along the back end. Got cracked more badly.
Oh. I did, I did.
And it's kind of like, yeah. It's kind of funny sitting right in the middle.
I shop. Want to?
How are you?
But good, I'm glad we're getting something along, Brian. That's good. So it's kind of hard to walk, walk car.
This summer it'll be kind of a both, you know, we'll still pull the ballards out and probably have some cars on there too, but the, the hope is that it becomes a path for cars and a
This was a scaled back version from the bids coming in.
Hey.
I have a question. I think I forgot to ask. Um, Central and Tomstop. Several ago another survey on whether a speed light could be warranted for that intersection. I'm understanding what the part of it was owned by the county and if there's a survey that would warrant a stoplight at that. I was wondering if, or are giving stoplight there on Central and Tomstop.
So it is in the twenty years T S D, but the, the last time, so it's all owed off jurisdiction um, to the side of Tomstop and so they're the ones that regulate that and it warranted the flashing beacon thus far and so that was recently installed. Um, the flashing beacon was just last summer-ish winter. Um, so less, within the last year, but or less, um, it was just installed. And so, but it, it is for going towards a light, but it's just a matter of knowing that it's marked.
Because I, I know that several people ask me, why don't we have a stoplight? Yeah, all the time.
Yeah, we can ask, but it did just warrant the pedestrian thing, so that's where it is at this point, but we can find out how often.
First, she does not also depend on the traffic law and they, they take a count, it has to be a certain amount before they get to buy it.
Accidents trigger a lot too.
Yeah.
If somebody dies, they do, yeah, volunteer.
Yeah.
So we have several intersections that we feel that would warrant them and make y'all.
So I was there. Probably turn right. I just, I'm going across.
Well, Dakota is becoming worse and worse. I'm wondering once those apartments are done, are they going to do something there? Because it's awful now. We are currently working with ODOT and we're going on both sides are looking for a signal there. Um, and then be able to design it according to a full build-out. Money doesn't run on truth.
Okay, so public comment, purpose of public comment is to allow citizens to present information regarding items off the agenda. A time limit of three minutes per session now apply. Any other data of a comment? Three minutes.
And my only this is our first.
Thank you. Welcome.
We, oh, we did. The, the community said. There's another, another job. Was it? It was a lot.
Just telling your neighbors it's
Oh, we know. That's
All right, thank you. Right, we entered.
Maybe we should put that on the website. You know, what's that? When you put so, you know.
Have you guys never dealt with Google before? So you can tell Google, you can re-establish where things are.